The regular meeting of the Planning Commission is called to order at 7:04 PM. We will now take a moment for silent prayer mediation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Commissioner Lewis.
Please face the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the authority for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Joanne, can you do roll call?
Commissioner Lewis?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Present.
Commissioner Becerra?
Here.
Commissioner Hang?
Here.
Chair Gutierrez?
Here. All right. Now we'll go on to approval of minutes. Tonight, we have minutes in the regular meeting on September 12, 2023 of the regular meeting. Does anyone have any amendments to these minutes? If there's no changes, then the minutes are approved as submitted. We'll now move on to oral communications. Would anyone like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? If not, okay. We'll now move on to our public hearings. Tonight, we have three public hearings. Who will present the staff report?
Chair, for the first item, the applicant is Mark Gabe. It is for a precise plan. This item was continued from the last Planning Commission hearing to today for changes in the design. And the applicant was unable to provide me revised design prior to the packets going out. They did email me plans for the revised design this morning. So staff is requesting that this item be continued to the October 10, 2023 Planning Commission meeting.
Great, thank you. Does any member of the Planning Commission have any questions for staff? Okay, we need a motion to continue this matter until October 10, 2023 of the regular planning meeting. Do we have a motion?
Chair, before you proceed, since this item is a public hearing item, if we can open the public hearing in case there's somebody here who would like to speak for or against the item.
Great. So before we move on, we'll open public hearing. Since this is a full house, no one wants to speak on the matter, we'll continue. We'll now close public hearing. And so now, if any of the commission members, if someone want to make a motion to continue this?
Motion to approve.
Great. And we have a second?
We're gonna motion to continue or to approve?
To continue.
To continue. Okay.
Great, so we have a...
I'll have a sec, I'll second it.
Great.
Motion to continue.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Becerra and a second by Commissioner Hang. And now we go do roll call.
Just real, real quick, just want to make sure it's continued to October 10, 2023, correct?
Correct, yes.
Roll call, Commissioner Lewis?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Becerra?
Aye.
Commissioner Hang?
Aye.
Chair Gutierrez?
Aye. Great. Next, we'll move on to conditional use permit number 23-05, category exemption with applicant Shaheen Malik from Walnut Valley Animal Hospital located at 4141 South Nogales Street, Suite B101. The applicant is requesting approval of a conditional use permit to allow the use of a veterinary hospital. Walnut Valley Animal Hospital within an existing 2,400 square foot tenant space located in the service commercial SCC zone. Who will be presenting the staff report?
Planning Assistant Jerry Rivera will present the staff report.
Great.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, Honorable Chair. This is conditional use permit number 23-05 for Walnut Valley Animal Hospital, Veterinary Hospital. So I'd like to give a little background. The zone of the subject site is service commercial. Location is on the northeast corner of Valley Boulevard and South Nogales Street. The subject site is located inside the Valley-Nogales Center. The surrounding uses are office professional, multifamily, service commercial, heavy commercial, residential, single-family, and neighborhood commercial. And the lot size is 1.85 acres. These are pictures of the existing building. Oh, sorry. And this is the site plan that was provided. The yellow color is the defined area that is for the veterinary hospital. This is the floor plan that was provided by the applicant. The green is reception and waiting area. The orange indicates the exam areas. The yellow indicates the space that will be used for the restrooms. The blue indicates the office space. Purple indicates the space that will be used for treatment, radiology, and dental. Red indicates the space that will be used for surgeries. And the dark blue above indicates the storage space underneath. So this is the business operations plan. The hours of operation are 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and it will be open seven days a week. The services that will be provided are radiology, surgeries, and general wellness. Planning staff recommends adopting resolution number 23-6131, approving conditional use permit number 23-05. If you have any questions, I am here to answer them. The applicant was supposed to be here, but I don't see him.
Well, one question I have. What will they be using the storage area for? Or do you know?
Honestly, I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Does any other members of the commission have any comments or questions for staff? Great, okay, none. We'll now open for public hearing. Does any member... So, where's this all? Sorry. Okay. So, open public hearing. Anyone in favor of this or like, who like to speak? Anyone in opposition to this proposal? All right. At this time, we'll now close public hearing and open discussion by the commission. I will now open commission discussion. Commissioner Lewis?
Nothing from me. I would motion to adopt conditional use permit number 23-05 unless there's any further discussion.
Okay. Any more discussion by the commission? Anyone have any more comments? No?
Chair, just, well, for the record, I believe the applicant did have a comment they submitted.
So the applicant did call earlier today. He wanted to change, I believe in the staff report, we had it for no overnight stays for the pets. But he wanted to include it on there now because what if a pet is sick? So that's just one of the changes that he wanted, that he requested over the phone.
Okay, to allow for overnight, to keep the patient.
They still would not be open to the public for walk-ins, but they will have the patient, the pet that's sick there for monitoring.
So my, I have a quick question then for staff. So technically, although the business hours would be from 9:00 to 6:00 PM, or 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, the applicant would be requesting the ability to, I guess, sort of pro forma operate the business for purposes of overnight. Is that, is that a correct statement?
That's correct. That's staff's understanding. The applicant actually just walked in. If the chair would like to reopen the public hearing to give the applicant to answer any of the question regarding storage and also to testify for this project.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and reopen public hearing to allow the applicant to come up. You go ahead and come up and tell us about your project. Right there, on the speaker.
Thank you very much for giving me an opportunity. I would like to start my small animal practice in West Covina. And I already have a practice across the street, right at Nogales and San Jose. But my, everything is becoming very short for me, so I'm just trying to move into a new place. So this is a place very close to me. Basically, we deal with small animals, just dogs and cats and some exotic sometimes. And it's gonna be a full-service practice. We are gonna be open from 9 o'clock till 6:00 PM, and we'll be working seven days a week. We don't plan to have any boarding in our facility. But being an animal hospital, we are supposed to keep our pets sometimes overnight, only the sick pets. We are not gonna do any boarding. It's becomes, it's a part of the business, actually. You know, you can't really send everybody home. You can't even send everybody to an emergency clinic because it becomes very much expensive for the clients to bear the charges for the emergency clinic or the night, so they always want us to keep the pet in the night. The, this is something which we are also allowed by our medical board to keep the pets. The only thing the board requires is that we have to communicate with our client, let them know that there's gonna be nobody overnight, monitor your pets. And, but we only keep those pets which are not critical. We don't keep the critical patient that definitely have to go to the emergency clinics. Other than that, I think we have given all the details. We plan to hire around eight employees. And it's gonna be like three exam rooms. We wanna have one room for our surgery and some reception areas and some treatment area where we can perform routine, small procedures, wound treatment, examining the patients, and also dental. We'll have a small area for our lab. We don't need a big lab, actually. We just need a microscope and small blood machines over there. And then we have one area for our dental also. We provide almost all kind of services. We don't do specialized surgeries. If we need any, like an orthopedic surgery, I'm not specialized to do that, so we have to call somebody to come in and do our surgeries for that. So I'm ready to answer any of your questions if you have.
Well, the only question that I had was, how will you be using the storage area?
Storage?
Yes.
Yeah, the storage is in the basement area. That is basically for my pharmacy and, you know, a lot of stuff we need to store in there. And we probably will give an area for our staff to sit in there for the lunch breaks. And it's very nicely, it's all, there are air conditioning in there. It's a nice place. That's mainly we're gonna use that. Main business is on our top. We can't really move our surgery rooms down there because we can't take the patients down there. So our patients will stay on that top. But only would be just like a storage, maybe staff, maybe some staff meeting, some, some things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Great. Any more questions for applicant?
Sure, I had a quick, a quick couple of questions just pertaining to language that would potentially go into the prospective adoption of the CUP here. So would this language complicate it for you in any way if we said that the only permitted overnight patients would be non-critical overnight patients with acute medical needs, but no general animal boarding or care permitted?
Yeah, basically, you should allow me to keep my sick patients in there.
Understood.
And that, I mean, that is a part of the business. You go to the hospital, you know, you don't see the patient until you go home, sleep at home.
Right.
So same happens with us. And people who come to us, they trust us.
Certainly.
And if I tell them to go to another place for the night, they say, no, doctor, you keep my pet here. You know, I don't want to go to a new doctor. And then you bring the same pet back to me, you know, it's hassle for them. Go in the night in different place, in the morning you come back to me, and then, you know, it becomes a lot of complications, and it becomes expensive. Emergency clinics are expensive, much more expensive. The people in our area, it's hard for them to afford those. Something if I'm charging $100, they're gonna charge $500 for that. If anybody, if you have the pets have the experience to go to an emergency clinic, I mean, it's expensive.
Just want to follow up on that a little bit. With regard to the, the operating hours being 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Sunday, the question that comes to mind is, in the event that you do have an overnight stay by an animal patient in that context, are you or any of your employees going to be on-site at that time or no?
Well, as I told you, we're just gonna keep non-emergency patients. If I have to keep somebody, if the client is ready to pay for that, and if it's really demanding and they agree to it, we can, but generally, we don't. We have our cameras in there and somebody watching at home.
Okay.
And if there is any problem, we can just come in and do it. And sometimes if somebody will come in, like me or any of my technicians to come and give an injection, stay for 10, 15 minutes, go back home just to check the patient. Rest of the time, we can, we can do on the, on our video cameras. I do, you know, I have patients sometimes, and I look into my monitors and cell phones and just see what's going on with the patients.
So it, so in the event that, in the event that you have an overnight patient, what you're, what you're saying, I just want to make sure I'm clear on this, it would be, there would be remote monitoring of the patients, so, but no employees on-site except for, except on an as-needed basis?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, all right.
That's right.
To tend to the treatment of the animal.
Yeah, but board requires that we put a notice on the wall that no person is available in the night. This is a requirement. So we have, the clients, they know it. We tell them, okay, you know, you want me to leave your pet here? I can do that, but there's nobody gonna be here watching overnight. Yeah, we tell them, are you ready to it? They say, okay, yeah. And then... No. If we give that number, I won't be able to sleep in the night. Yeah, that's what the people, they want us, that we should deal. Number one, they don't trust anybody else. Secondly, they, they are aware of the cost going to the emergency clinic. And if anything happens at night, you know, anybody can come in and, you know, we do that. If I have a sick patient in my clinic, I can't sleep in the night. I have to see what's going on with him, you know? I have to come sometime in the night. I let, yeah, you should be aware that if I have to come, I can come. Yeah, and there should be no restriction on that, you know?
Yeah, I'm glad that you are expanding in West Covina, and I know there's a lot of shortages when it comes to animal hospitals. So I know that having you here in West Covina will be very important to our community who have pets. So thank you for investing in our community. Would any of the other commission members like to make any comments?
And then when I'm gonna move my clinic, original clinic which I have, I'm gonna use that facility just for boarding.
Great, great, yeah.
So I don't have to board my patients.
Great.
My new clinic.
Any more questions? No?
I think I received one of your advertisements recently. I didn't even know that you were there in that area, so it'd be nice to know that we have that available to our...
Thank you very much.
Little love, furry pets.
Yeah, as soon as I get my permits and start my construction, I want to start business as soon as possible.
Great, yeah. Make sure you tell our city staff so we could be there and our city council could be there because our city council are proud community supporters, so.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Would anyone else in the public have, if there's any people opposed or in favor of the item? Seeing none, we're now close public hearing and see if there's a motion or commission comments. I think we, we had a motion already or no?
So unless there's no comments, I'll like to make a motion. Are there any other comments?
Any comments, guys? No?
So I will make a motion to adopt conditional use permit number 23-05 with following language changes to, I believe this would be paragraph five subsection, subsection E. The veterinary hospital is approved to operate between the hours of 9:00 AM and 6:00 PM, Monday through Sunday. And then however, however, non-critical overnight animal patients with acute medical needs may stay on an overnight basis, but no general animal boarding shall be permitted. Animals will be subject to monitoring, to remote monitoring by employees, and employees will be present only on an as-needed basis after the hours set forth to administer treatment as, on an as-needed basis.
I'll go ahead and second it. Joanne, roll call?
I'll go ahead and read the resume number in call roll. The resolution number is Planning Commission Resolution Number 23-6131. Commissioner Lewis?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Becerra?
Aye.
Commissioner Hang?
Aye.
Chair Gutierrez?
Aye.
Let the record show, 5-0, approved. Chair, if, before the next item, if I, I would like to request a recess to get Polina and I to switch seats and...
Okay, great, yeah, no problem. We'll go ahead and take a five-minute recess. Okay, the commission's now back from recess. We'll now move on to item number four. The revocation and/or modification of conditional use permit number 15-05 and administrative use permit number 15-09 with category exemption. The permittee is Eric Rocky of Red Bull Yell Bar and Steakhouse located at 2050 South Valinda Avenue. The staff report and evidence will be presented by Joanne Burns and the West Covina Police Department.
Good evening, Chair, members of the Planning Commission. Just a bit of background information of the location of the restaurant. Red Bull Yell Bar and Steakhouse is located on, in the Sater Brothers Shopping Center at the northeast corner of Amar Road and Valinda Avenue. The 1,075 square foot restaurant tenant space faces Valinda Avenue and is approximately 40 feet from the adjacent single-family residential properties along Doris Street, which is to the north of the site. The entitlements that are being considered for revocation or modification are an approval for a conditional use permit that allowed for live entertainment, which is live music, and a administrative use permit that allowed for the on-sale alcohol service or sales for onsite consumption in conjunction with the operation of a restaurant. Go ahead and go over the timeline. The Planning Commission initially approved the administrative use permit and conditional use permit in October 27 of 2015. The Planning Commission, upon a request by the permittee, the Planning Commission approved revised hours of operation on December 11, 2018. On October 8, 2019, the California Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control suspended the alcohol license for 20 days. The 20-day suspension, it was a result of the permittee, Mr. Rocky, pleading guilty regarding being accessory to a crime where he hid a stolen firearm from, from, for an employee that fled into the Red Bull Yell Restaurant while under surveillance by the Los Angeles County Sheriff's deputies. According to the ABC investigation report, which has been included in the staff report provided to the Planning Commission, the deputies obtained permission to review the video surveillance where Mr. Rocky confessed to being involved in hiding the weapon. The deputies were able to access the video surveillance and observe Mr. Floyd, which is the employee that was named, giving the firearm to another employee to hide. That employee that received the firearm gave it to her boss, which is Mr. Rocky, who took possession of it and went back to the office and returned without the firearm. And this report is included as attachment seven in, in the resolution. The license, the ABC license was again suspended most recently on July 23, 2023, and I believe the suspension has been since lifted. And the reason for this suspension was that there were state tax, there was a state tax delinquency. On August 29, 2023, I contacted the permittee to inform him of the initiated revocation process and schedule, and this was done via telephone. On August 31, 2023, I followed up the phone call with a written letter notice that was emailed to him and also mailed to his address. that was emailed to him and also mailed to his address. On September 23rd, the public hearing notification was sent. A copy of the public hearing notification per code was sent to all properties within, and property owners and occupants within 300 feet from the site, including the permittee. I sent it to both the restaurant and also his listed address in the business, for the business license. I also sent the public hearing notice to him via email. On September 21st, I provided the Planning Commission agenda packet to the app, to the permittee via email on both his email addresses that he has listed in the business license, in his business license. Note that, I just would like the Planning Commission to note that the previously mentioned ABC license suspensions were conducted through ABC alone and the city was not involved in any of that decision. On the projector is a list of the required, that the required grounds for revocation of a conditional use permit or administrative use permit. And this is found on section 26-2696.06 of the West Covina Municipal Code. With this, staff believes that the applicant, the applicant or, well, the permittee is in violation of A and E based on the evidence that will be presented. A, the use is detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or is a nuisance. And then E, the conditions of approval have not been complied with. So based on A, the West Covina Police Department records indicate that there have been over 20 calls for service at the Rebel Yell location since July 2021. I, when, initially when the police department contacted staff, we had asked for any records of calls for service within the past two years. So this was the record that was provided to staff and was provided to the Planning Commission. Note that the calls for service that I am mentioning includes not only calls for service that, where police received calls from dispatch to report to the site. And it also includes self-initiated calls for service. And both information has been provided and separated within the spreadsheet that was provided to the Planning Commission. The calls for service includes over 50 disturbance noise, disturbance or noise disturbance calls. And again, this is listed as attachment four in the staff report. Amongst the calls for service, it includes a list of items that staff has provided police reports for. And this items, these items are from May 24th, 2023. The West Covina Police Department responded to disturbance call regarding a bartender beating up a customer on January 28th of this year. Again, the West Covina Police Department responded to a call regarding a bar fight on December 29th of last year. There was a call regarding four to six gunshots. And December 19th, there was a reported rape. On November 2nd, there was a call of a person throwing a bottle that hit somebody on the head. And on April 2, April 2nd, there was a call regarding somebody pulling out a semi-automatic pistol. And in January 27th, there was a call regarding somebody with a knife trying to fight another person who was hiding in the restroom. And as mentioned earlier, the log is included in the staff report. This, a representative from the West Covina Police Department is here. And if you can testify, sir? Please state your name.
Good evening. My name's Travis Tibbetts. I'm the lieutenant assigned to our investigative division at the police department. I've held that rank and that responsibility for about four and a half years now. Prior to that, I was a lieutenant patrol for four years. Joanne got it pretty much spot on with the details that she gave you regarding the calls for service. So I'll try to sum it up from a police department's perspective and concern. Going back even further than Joanne went, we've actually had a shooting that occurred in broad daylight over there. That's still an open investigation, pre-COVID. And then during COVID, obviously, customers were put outside and the clientele that started to gather there became more of the problem, gang members, various different things. We've had quite a few major incidents, shootings. We've had people driving by shooting at people that are in the parking lot or loitering out front. We've had all kinds of noise complaints, things, bar fights, you know, different loitering, DUIs, drunken public. I mean, it's at the point where we've had to do directed type of patrols to curb some of the activities that are going involving the people that are attending the Rebel Yell Bar. That's beyond the major investigations. And even the major investigations, when they do occur, they take up a lot of our police officers' time. You know, at any given time, we may only have seven to 10 officers on the street. And on a major incident, we got to utilize at least five to six of those, at least in the beginning of the response, that takes, to take control of the major situations. On the smaller ones, like the noise disturbance, minimum, we're sending two. But it got to the point where we, most calls for service, we won't send less than three just because of the officer's safety issues that are involved with the people that attend the bar. It's even difficult for us, you know, as police officers, uniformed police officers, we have to go inside the bar. I can't send less than three just because of the concern in officer's safety issues, who's in the bar, what's in the bar, what might occur as far as, you know, the safety issues go. Lot of activity that takes up a lot of our time, costs a lot of money. When we do direct patrols, obviously, we have to staff additional police officers out there to do that, that costs overtime oftentimes. So it just starts to become a drain on our resources. And as far as investigations go, I could tell you, we haven't had much, our detectives, my detectives haven't had much cooperation from the employees and the management at the bar. We've had difficult times getting video on various different investigations, and there's a number of them. And that makes it a little bit challenging when we move forward to try to prosecute or do something to curb the behavior. And we've just had kind of a challenge to do that. It has gone up and down. So I will tell you, there's times where it seems very active, where we would probably put that to people that attend the bar, gang fights, like two different gang members hanging out in front of the Rebel Yell Bar, maybe another, maybe something has been ignited between the two games. So now the activity's picking up and then it will drop for a while. So it's not consistent every night, but it's certainly significant. And it's a significant concern. Our detectives came, became very concerned, particularly, and I believe it was last summer, when someone drove by and started just shooting a gun out at people out front. Because that obviously can hit, that gunfire can hit anybody. I did bring a few things just to, am I okay to go over this a little bit?
Okay.
Just a few things, just to show you kind of what the police officers are responding to there. On May 24th, this call for service was a bartender beat up a customer. We have to send, you know, at least three officers to that. And that was at early in the morning, like 2:00 a.m. in the morning. This one may or may not have involved the bar and restaurant there particularly, but there was a father, there was a domestic violence incident out in the parking lot. Can't go too much into that. On January 28th, 2023, early in the morning, 1:30, people were calling about noise in a bar fight. A lot of people outside, they thought they smelled smoke, maybe a fire. We had to go handle that. There was a hit and run, not quite sure. It completely goes back to that. The probability is high, maybe someone leaving the bar. It was about 9:45 at night on January 19th. We got a call, four to five gunshots heard. Those are times, we've had a couple of those and we've actually verified by finding shell casings, expanded shell casings on the ground. So that corroborates the, you know, a lot of people hear gunshots, but sometimes it's fireworks or whatnot. But when we find the expanded shell casings on the ground, it corroborates the fact that someone drove by and shot at someone or at the building or somewhere in that vicinity. Going back to December, that's when we had a report of rape. Back in November, we have a male throwing a bottle at another male. Someone was gashed in the head. We had to send numerous officers and fire department after that. Back in July of 2022, we had a couple gunshot victims out in front. We have to call in, when that happens too, it expends our resources. We have to call in our detectives oftentimes to do the follow-up investigations on that. April 2022, a male pulled out a semi-automatic pistol on somebody. We had other fights back in January of 2022, and it just goes back further. So it's a mix between the noise, the alcohol, in my opinion, professional opinion, has something to do with people's behavior out front. If they're too intoxicated or loitering too late into the night, that's when things tend to get a little worse. But it's been a drain on the police department's resources and it is a concern for public safety on our part. Is there any other questions I can?
No questions at this time, but if you can stand by, I would have questions for you later on in the presentation of evidence.
Okay, no problem.
Sorry, Lieutenant Tibbetts, if you can stay on the stand. Sorry. In addition, okay, so the staff did receive emails from neighbors. Three emails have been included in the Planning Commission packet. One email from Deborah Gomez was sent in today and a copy of that email was provided to the Planning Commission in front, on the dais. And staff also provided a copy of the email prior to the meeting to the permittee. The emails that staff received from neighbors state expressed concerns regarding noise and also their safety. In regards to conditions of approval, resolution number 20, I'm sorry, resolution number 15-5783, this is one of the resolutions that allowed the applicant to operate for the conditional use permit for alcohol service. One, D, included, the approved use shall not create a public nuisance. F, the business owner and manager of this establishment shall be strictly accountable for compliance with all conditions imposed as part of this conditional use permit, whether or not the owner or the manager are personally present at the location. I apologize, I mentioned alcohol service, conditional use permit, but this is actually for live entertainment. Security personnel will patrol the surrounding parking lot in vicinity to ensure patrons are neither loitering nor causing any undue disturbance. Lieutenant Tibbetts, from your account or in also the reports from the responding police officers, when they had patrolled the site or reported to the site, do a call, to a call for service, has, did any of the police officers note any security personnel patrolling the parking lot and also or within, or is in the restaurant to ensure that the patrons are not causing any undue disturbance?
I'm not 100% sure if there was hired security out there from time to time. I could tell you that if there was, they were, it was completely ineffective. I don't know if they were professional security hired or if it's security hired of people that know the owners or the employees, but nothing that made any significant difference in the behavior or the loitering that occurred out front.
Thank you. And then this, this is the condition of approval for resolution 15-5784, which is for, for the live entertainment and also the administrative, the AEP. The business owner and manage, again, what I mentioned earlier, the business owner and manager is responsible for the conditions of approval. The approved use shall not create a public nuisance. And in the event that the surrounding residents or businesses are negatively impacted due to the live statement, the Planning Commission may review the conditional no-use permit for live entertainment and may modify it. This is the resolution that extended the hours of operation. Again, it talked about the security personnel and the property owner being responsible. And these are conditions of approval for all three resolutions. It included a police department requirement for a CCTV monitoring system, which allows police department personnel to easily access the system and download the video. And it also requires that real-time recording with a storage space for 30, 30-day at minimum. Lieutenant Tibbetts, was the police department able to access recorded footage from the site and was the police department granted access of the recording system?
In all the cases where we needed to obtain video, we've had no luck at obtaining the video, getting cooperation from employees or the owners at that location and providing that to us.
Thank you. The summary of, the projector's a summary of the evidence provided, the West Covina Police Department call logs, the police reports, letters from the neighbors, and the report from the California Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control, and also here today, the testimony from the West Covina Police Department Representative Lieutenant Tibbetts. The Planning Commission has several options. One of the options One of the options is to revoke the administrative use permit and/or conditional use permit. The administrative use permit allows for onsite alcohol sales and the conditional use permit allows for live entertainment. To modify or to modify the administrative use permit and/or conditional use permit or to determine or to make a determination that sufficient evidence was not provided to warrant a revocation or modification. Please note that any decision that the planning commission makes today, staff will prepare a resolution to summarize the decision and also the evidence provided and considered by the planning commission and present the resolution at the next meeting of October 10th to the planning commission that represent, the resolution is to represent the planning commission's decision tonight based on their deliberation. Any decision made by the planning commission is subject to appeal to the city council within 10 days of the decision, which is 10 days from the adoption of the resolution. And we will, if the, once the planning commission renders a decision and the resolution is adopted, we will provide the permutee and also the public more information regarding the appeal process. With this, staff is recommending that the planning commission hold the public hearing, review all evidence presented, consider testimony from all parties present, invoke, to revoke the administrative use permit and conditional use permit. If the planning commission has questions for staff, clarification questions for staff and also the police department representative, we are available to answer.
Thank you for the staff report. Does any member of the planning commission have questions for staff specifically of what was presented by staff or the West Covina Police Department at this time? Commissioner Lewis?
A few questions. With regard to the video compliance requirements set forth in the administrative use permit, is it your understanding that there was a, that there is a camera system with video audio recording on-site?
To my knowledge there, at least at a particular time there was. I don't know if it was consistent the entire time. I don't know that. I could tell you that particularly on the instances, the more serious instances that involve the shootings, my detectives had a very difficult time getting any cooperation from anyone there at the business. And we haven't obtained any video where particularly the one a few years ago that was in during the day, we were able to obtain video from, there's a liquor store right around the corner. We were very easily able to obtain that video. So we just had a difficult time. I spoke to my sergeant that supervises our homicide detectives, our robbery detectives, those guys that investigate those matters today. And I confirmed with him again, have we ever been able to get video from the Rebel Yell? And he said, no, we haven't.
And just to clarify this further, in any of those instances, was there a subpoena that was provided to the permutee?
We wouldn't do a subpoena because the case, we would only do subpoenas if the case was filed and we're looking to get evidence on a criminal, something, there was a criminal complaint. It's already been filed. We'd do a search warrant. And I can look and get back. I'm not sure that we necessarily felt it was prudent in that investigation to do the search warrant, like what we're going to get out of it, not enough juice for the squeeze, if you will, if we already had enough evidence for something else. Or maybe we had, you know, it wasn't something that was of interest to our detectives so much to be able to put all the work in of the search warrant to get it. There could have been instances where they did. Going back, my memory just can't serve me back four years because the problems go back for some time. There, I can tell you there are some instances where I don't think we bothered with getting the search warrant. It's just much easier to get the cooperation from the business owners than to write the search warrants, go in there, take the hard drives, figure out how we can access the video or whatnot. It just gets a little bit more difficult.
Understood. And then just going to the, I guess, noise issues on-site, has the, has the police department ever issued any citation to the permutee for noise violations?
Probably not. And the reason I say that is our police officers like to try to handle that diplomatically and getting people to move on or close, just like any house party or whatnot. We just don't issue a lot of noise citations. They're a little bit more difficult to prove without knowing the level of the noise. We just have gotten a lot of calls and it's mostly probably from talking and loitering outside, loudness that kind of probably permeates through to the houses that are just north of where that's at. That would be, that would be my guess, is it's those people that live just north of that because Amar is just south of that, that's loud. Valinda comes in, I doubt that that noise gets heard down to that way. It's the houses north of.
So, and just for sort of foundational purposes here, there are multiple businesses in this shopping center, correct?
Yes, it wraps around to a few different businesses and then over to the grocery store.
And based upon your experience, are what, approximately what percentage of the calls for service are this particular business, the permutees business?
The Rebel Yell has given us quite a lot of business over the past four years. I would say a higher, I don't know the exact number, but a higher number percentage of the calls in that particular area are going to be coming from the Rebel Yell. Of course, we've got, the liquor store occasionally has had its problems. Sater Brothers gets theft problems and we have to go on that as well. The area where that bar is at, I've been in the police department for 23 years and even before it was the Rebel Yell, we've had problems off and on with whatever business that was there. You know, it borderlines the Valinda La Puente area, brings in different people through that area. There's a major thoroughfare that runs across. So it's just in an area where having a late-night bar and the food, of course, has been problematic for us over the years, even before it was the Rebel Yell.
Understood. Just so that I'm clear on this, so I want to make sure I have an understanding. With regard to the percentage, would you say it's more than 50% of the calls for service that are pertaining to this business?
Yes.
Okay, more than 60%?
Probably the vast majority, probably 80% of our calls in that particular area. If I broke it down to that block or that 80-plus percent of the calls over the past few years have been as a result of the people at Rebel Yell. I try to be very careful what I say. I've never spoken to the owners. I understand and empathize with business owners that are trying to make a living and run a business. And a lot of times it's the people that are attending that business that caused the problem. But nonetheless, that ends up becoming a huge burden on the police department and public safety if we can't control who's going and how they're going and how late they're staying and how much they're loitering and how much the behavior of the patrons attending that business causes the police to get called.
And then with regard to the corridor on Amar that happens to be in West Covina, is this, is there any other business that you are aware of? And you don't need to name names here, that has more calls for service on average, in an average year for the past four years than this business?
No. No. I could even, to put it in perspective, so over the years, you know, there's been businesses that have caused a lot of work for the police department, a lot of calls for service. I'm sure everyone's been in West Covina for a while. Like if you can remember, like when the Crazy Horse was where Portos is at, that caused us a lot of problems as well. So it tends to surround who's attending, the alcohol levels that are being served, if they're being over-served and how late they're allowing people to stay there. And those are the factors that we start to see that draws in a particular crowd that causes more problems. So if I were going to put the Rebel Yell on that level, I would say they're pretty close to what we had with, from times with Nationals and Crazy Horse. And if we go way back with the Savari Bar, like that type of level. Those were bigger establishments, but very similar. And if it wasn't just me in here and you had just a patrol officer coming in here, every single one of our patrol officers understands that the Rebel Yell is a problem out there. Every one of them. So it's not like something where, you know, oh, it is, you know, for another police officer. Everybody knows that the Rebel Yell is one of our higher calls-for-service problem establishments that we have to go to often.
Understood. And then just, so I have some clarification as far as the calls-for-service aspect of this. Are the calls-for-service originating from patrons inside the, or, excuse me, not, strike that. Are the calls-for-service originating from issues inside the business that originated inside the business or are they originating outside on average?
It's very, it's very hard for us to figure out what's going on inside unless we're going to do an operation and put someone in there and figure it out. You know, I would tell you that for the major incidents, it had everything to do with the loitering outside. So coming inside, going outside, going inside to drink, coming outside, loitering. Particularly, we haven't quite 100% figured out what the conflict was, but there was certainly some sort of conflict involving two gangs where they were shooting at each other. The probability that someone, a patron is armed, illegally armed with a handgun or firearms at Rebel Yell is very high. We've, I can't remember a time when I've seen so much shooting activity occur at a bar. And I'm even comparing it to the bigger places, like, you know, when we had the Crazy Horse and Nationals and those places, there's a lot of activity. And I understand that might be overwhelming for the owner to control because it did involve the people that were attending the bar. And the only thing I can think of from a police perspective is what's occurring at that establishment that attracts them to go there, stay there, remain there, loiter there and commit crime, if you will, there. That's the concern. I hope I answered the question.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, my concern also is, you know, it follows the last question for Commissioner Lewis. So if the owner, Mr. Rogue, you know, if he is limited with his control of what's happening in his establishment, then, you know, I mean, why hasn't this before been brought? You know, that's a lot of calls. It's a lot of calls. But also just like the rape, you know, did this, all these situations or calls, did they all occur during business hours or were they after? I mean, was there a point where he could have had control of the situation? Do we know that? I mean, particularly, did the rape occur inside during business hours?
Yeah, so we didn't, we didn't see too much activity like during the day, you know, and I would, I would, I would do some investigative and ask around and ask people, are they serving food in there, the food good, you know, to figure out, okay, are they serving food? Or are they not serving food? Because you have to serve the food with alcohol. And I got some responses back, yeah, they were serving food, it's good food and people go in there during the day. We didn't have as many problems until there was a particular group on one day a few years ago where we did have the problem and a shooting occurred between people coming in from the street and then people that were loitering out front. Most of the activity was occurring later in the evening after, after a number of hours, so early in the morning when the loitering is occurring outside. Can the owner, I mean, I would have to speculate. You know, if I, you know, business owner, if, I find it very hard to believe they don't know what's going on. If I could say that.
So that's really what I'm asking too. Was he present during all of this? And if he was, then there's really not any control there.
Yeah, and I don't know, I can't tell you if the actual owner of the business was there or they had some manager there that either participated in the activity. I mean, the Sheriff's Department incident, I did hear about that after it occurred when the Sheriff's Department chased someone in there and the gun incident that you were told about. I mean, that's pretty indicative that you're not cooperating with the police, right? So I have to speculate as far as what involvement the owner had, how much they were there. It just seems like if I compare it to other businesses that we've had problems with all, and I could relate to this, I could liken it like this. When we had problems at Nationals or Crazy Horse or these big places, the management teams always worked with the police to make sure that they could make it a better environment so that they could stay open and the business can prosper. We haven't had any of that with Rebel Yell. No proactiveness to work with the police, none of that. No cooperation when our officers are there. You know, no, no asking any recommendations how to make it better. I find it really hard to believe that they don't know the activity that's occurring in and around their bar.
And just to piggyback on that question too, can you explain to the public and the commission the system that the police department uses to track either 911 calls or emergency calls for assistance at specific addresses? And how the history is kept and the log is kept in regards to a specific address or phone number and so forth?
So we use a software application that all police departments use, a computer-aided dispatch program that various different software companies provide. We use one that it categorizes the date, time and what the dispatcher's input for the call for service and then it stores that so that we can access it later. And it goes by various different searching points, the reporting party's name, the address, the latitude, longitude. I mean, we could search on where calls for service are coming in for that way. That call data stays for, I believe, five years before it's purged. And that way we can analyze how, how much time we're spending at one particular location. Because as, you know, we are not a huge police department, so we do communicate rather well with each other, our officers. But, you know, we have officers that work during the day, officers work during the night and there are two different things going on. And sometimes it's hard to know exactly what's going on in one particular area of the city. So we utilize that software to do that.
And can you say that the calls are occurring or the crime that's occurring is specifically by patrons who are coming from the location?
Yeah, I mean, we've done surveillance out there to verify that. We've done surveillance a number of times with director patrols where we're stopping people leaving. We've arrested them for DUI, we've arrested them for possession of firearms, we've arrested them with possession of narcotics, leaving that location.
Great, thank you. Any more comments regarding?
I actually have one. Regarding that particular plaza, it's quite large. However, this restaurant is small compared to the whole complex. And in the amount of calls that you've received, I'm just curious in terms of when, the majority of the calls that happen or the activity that's happened, obviously, is the shopping, the entire shopping center is still open or just only this particular restaurant bar is open? I mean, particularly, I think the Sater Brother closed at midnight or?
I think they close around 10:00 or 11:00 weeknights and then they might stay open a little later. I don't, I'm not quite sure to midnight, but most of, obviously the shopping activity decreases late at night. That bar is open much later than any other businesses are there. I think there's a Subway shop or a sandwich shop right there in the corner that closes on a little bit of the other side. I think the liquor store stays open later with the bar. But most of those other businesses are closing early. And so the activity or the people in that area are at the bar.
Thank you. So, I'm sorry. Being that it's 1,075 feet, I mean, what is the amount of people that, what is the limit that are allowed in that?
It's a joint.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that question.
Fire codes.
I mean, have they been going over the limit? I mean, have they been, has it been to code? Have they had any violations with the fire department?
I'll be.
I don't know if there's any violations of the fire department. It's, I could tell you things that I've seen and then our officers. I could tell you things that I've seen and then our officers, there's been times where there's been a lot of people there and there's times when there hasn't been a lot of people there. I never even thought about to look at the occupancy on whether there, it's not something we look at as from the police department.
Yeah, it's usually the fire marshal.
Yeah, safety issue.
Chair, if I may?
Yes.
We have not received any records of any complaints regarding the occupancy limits.
Thank you. Any more questions?
Also, if I may, just a point of clarification regarding Commissioner Becerra's question earlier regarding the business owners may or may not, whether the business owners may or may not be aware of the activities that are happening within the restaurant. I just would like to note that all three resolutions included a condition of approval that states the business owner and manager of the establishment shall be strictly accountable for compliance with all conditions imposed as part of this conditional use permit, whether or not the owner or the manager are personally present at the location. So no matter what happens, whether or not he's there or he's aware of it, he is ultimately responsible for, for all activities.
Thank you, Joanne.
Commissioner Lewis? Two, two final questions for Lieutenant Tibbetts and then one for staff. Has the police department reached out directly to the management or the owner of this establishment to discuss these issues, to your knowledge?
I want to say yes, but I also don't want to misspeak because I'm not entirely sure. The sentiment I got from my detectives is they're never, they're not cooperative there. You know, so, and I know where you're going with that, you know, are we going to reach out to try to help this situation as an approach? And the sentiment from the police department or even our police officers in the street is they don't help us. They're not police friendly.
Understood. And, and then just specifically, obviously, there have, you've indicated that there have been arrests stemming from patrons, patrons in the, coming out of this establishment. My question is, has, have there ever been any charges?
Yeah, well, I'm, yes, I didn't look that up before I came here tonight, but I'm sure on those isolated incidents where we do surveillance and we, you know, we pulling people over for whether someone is driving drunk or there's separate probable cause to pull over the car and they get a gun out of the car. I'm pretty sure I could go back and figure out that those, those instances, the district attorney's office filed charges on, on those individuals. That kind of opens up a big door on each different circumstance and, but I could probably safely say yes. On some of the major incidents, like the shootings, we, we, we still don't know everything and those have been a little bit more difficult, particularly when two groups start to shoot at each other because now a self-defense issue comes in and so we've got to go a little farther. I mean, you do get, you can identify individuals who possess firearms, are they convicted felons? Can we go after them for that? So it's been a bit challenging because there's been a back and forth. And I can't, I can't sit here and say the owner of the establishment is involved in that particular activity. It's just that that's what's being drawn to that bar.
Understood. And then just a general question for staff then would be, has, has staff prior to the, to the notification that we were going to initiate, I guess the city was going to initiate potential revocation proceedings, has there been any dialogue between any city staff and the business or business owner or managers of this establishment?
Regarding the items that were presented to the planning commission, no. However, there, I, because in all calls, it appears that all calls and complaints regarding noise and activities as described within or around Rebel Yell has been, the police department has been called. So staff does not have any records of calls coming in to code enforcement other than a complaint regarding, regarding unpermitted signage.
Understood. And has there been any staff initiated discussion at all prior to the initiation of the revocation?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I have one question for the officer right here. Regarding all the incidents that you had mentioned earlier, when it happens, it appears that you had mentioned that you can sometime get help with videos from the surrounding businesses. However, you're not able to get any videos from the bar itself. Is that accurate?
Yeah, so like I had said earlier, I, you know, I spoke to my supervisor that supervises the detectives and he's saying, we've just never been able to get any video from, from or cooperation from the people that work at the bar. As far as the details, when they went, who they spoke to, did they just speak to, they just never, the sentiment is they're not cooperative with us. Certainly, the search warrant option is there for us. I don't have the answers on each particular case, whether we did or didn't write a search warrant for a particular video from the bar or if we even needed something from the bar because most of everything we've had, not everything, there's been bar fights, but it's been outside the bar. But it's, it's the people going to the bar that are involved in that.
But you were able to get some videos or some type of imagery from the neighboring business?
We got video from, like, the owner of the liquor store is very cooperative. We needed some video from him on an incident that trailed around the corner that started at the Rebel Yell bar, and we got video from him on that. In one particular, specific incident, incident I'm thinking of. But just no cooperation from the Rebel Yell as far as what my detectives are telling me.
Thank you.
Joanne, is there any requirement to give notice or warnings prior to coming to a discussion of a revocation?
In the, in the code, there is no, no procedure identified that requires staff to, to contact the applicant prior, in discussion of potential revocation. There is, in the revocation procedures, there is a process to contact and give notice to the applicant that there, that a hearing for revocation or modification is, is being, is going to be held. This is the, this revocation process is, is the, or modification process, this public hearing that's being held at the moment is the due process.
So staff is following the procedures outlined in the code?
And this is why we're here.
Yes, and exactly, that's what we're here doing this evening, and that's when they were given notice.
Joanne, for the administrative conditional use permit and also for the conditional use permit, there's a standard condition where the applicant is asked or his authorized representative to sign an affidavit identifying that they intend to comply with the conditions that are listed for each of the permits. Did that happen with this particular applicant?
I believe so because the conditional use permit and administrative use permit would not have been valid without that being signed. If it was not signed, then their approval is not valid at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments, questions? Okay. Okay, great. Thank you, Lieutenant. At this time, we were now open public hearing. Is the permittee or his representative here to present evidence? My understanding, he is, so we will call up Eric Rocky.
This is Mr. Eric Roque, I'm his attorney. I will maybe, if I may, have him kind of present his version of the facts so that, you know, he could put it in perspective. And then I'd like to address the question.
Great, and then the West Covina, I was informed by our city attorney, the West Covina municipal code allows for the chair to swear, to swear in the testimony given today. So do you mind if he's sworn in under oath? Great. I just got the wording here. Okay, please raise your right hand and respond to me. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this hearing is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Let the record reflect that this is a sworn, sworn statement by Eric Rocky.
All right, I'm here. I'm here. A lot of the questions you guys were asking, I'm asking the same questions. Rebel Yell, I love Rebel Yell, I love West Covina. I think Rebel Yell is a great place for West Covina. I think before we reached here, I think we should have talked. I've never met the lieutenant and no one's ever approached me and said, Eric, let's sit down and talk about these problems. But whatever it takes to make that place safer, I'm willing to do. You know, so, and a lot of these calls that are on there, we had the same problem when I opened up Rebel Yell. A lot of them are the liquor store, and I wasn't even there. So you can't contribute all these calls to me, you know? But it's easy to do that because everybody knows Rebel Yell now, so when they call in, they're saying, why the Rebel Yell? And a lot of these calls are gang members, and one of the gang members are the Crips. They're not there right now because they're trying to kill one of the guys. Another gang member is the La Fuente, and that's what all the shootings were and all the fights were. But they weren't allowed in Rebel Yell. I didn't allow them in there. So for them to say they're coming in out of Rebel, they were not. They were outside. And I would call the police department and say, is there any way you guys could patrol after hours? They would say, no, something has to happen and then we'll go patrol. But now they're there every day, which I appreciate. I need them there, but it's just, we're busier and that's the problem. I think we're just getting busier, and I think if we work something out, it could be a safer place. But just to come in here and say, shut them down, and we're, we're the biggest problem in West Covina? No way. I don't, that's, that's just not true. And a lot of these things that are coming, the rapes and everything, and that, I never was aware of that until right now. So I'm just pleading, this is my livelihood, I'm willing to do whatever it takes to make it safer, and that's why I'm here. Thank you.
Yeah, just let me say a few words. I mean, I understand there's been police, police activity there, and I don't know to what extent, and some of it might have been for the liquor, liquor store, others maybe something totally beyond the control of the owner or management of Rebel Yell. So I think what Mr. Roque is urging the commission to do is to see if we can work out a plan where working together, we can make it a safer place. Before Mr. Roque opened up Rebel Yell, the previous bar had tremendous problems. It was, you know, a humongous problem. It doesn't, it's pale, I mean, it doesn't compare to what, what's been, you know, since 2015 to, to where we used to be before. And not to justify the police activity now, but I think if we work together, we can make it a safer place. I've been involved with, with apartment owners, for example, in Wilmington and Watts where there was a lot of gang activity. And the city of LA, we had city attorney's hearings where they said, you have to do this, you have, they were going to put a receivership on the building. We were able to work out deals where we put in safety precautions, safety measures to make them safer, and, and it worked, it was a win-win situation where everybody, everybody turned up ahead, the city, the property owner and the tenants. Here, I think it's a similar situation, and I think we can approach it that way instead of being punitive and saying, we're going to shut you down. Bear in mind, there was no, there has never been any warnings about this, any, anything that say, hey, what's going on with this? Yeah, it's his responsibility to keep up the conditions of the permit, but sometimes it's, you know, it, you know, it's kind of like difficult to know that this is something that's already a problem that, that is in the city's radar and we need to do something about it. Now we know. And, and I think if we work out a, a, a plan to be able to resolve the problems, you know, bear in mind, there's, this is his whole life savings is in this place. He has 10 employees whose livelihood depend on this place. So it's, it's a very harsh measure to say, we're going to shut you down, we're going to revoke your permits, without giving him a chance to remediate the problems. Okay? So I think if we make out, if we, you know, together work out a, a, a plan, including with the police department, which I think they're, they're crucial in this, in this situation because they're in charge of law enforcement and maintaining the peace, and we can work, and they have experience of what things will work and what things may not work. And if we, if we can put together a, a plan and, you know, say, okay, this is what we're going to do, and this is, you know, and, you know, and he'll have to be responsible for sticking to the plan, of course. But I think if we look at it from a humane point of view and saying, this is part of West Covina, it's, it's been a problem, it's not just Rebel Yell, it's, you know, there's a lot of other issues, you know, gang activity did not come because of Rebel Yell, it's been around, they're hanging in one place or another. So let's figure out, how do we deal with that? How do we make it a better place and where everybody can, can, can do better? So with that, I like to, if, you know, maybe if you have questions for me or for Mr. Roque, I'd be delighted to have that.
Great, thank you. Does any members of the commission have questions for the permittee or his lawyer?
Yes, I have a question for the permittee. Could you come to the microphone? Good evening, Mr. Roque. Questions I have for you, one, when you received the administrative use permit and the conditional use permit, did you also sign an affidavit agreeing to the conditions for each one of those permits?
To be honest with you, I don't remember. That's the truth. I don't remember.
Did you understand the conditions?
I don't remember signing them, yeah, I don't know. Yeah. I'd like, I mean, if I could see them, I'd read them again. But I'm sure if that's what required, I'm sure I signed them, you know?
Did you receive the report for this evening's meeting?
I received it today.
Okay, did you have a chance to read?
I did. And I don't, I mean, most of it I did, and I gave it to him today too. I ordered records from the police department about three weeks ago so I can do some homework, but I didn't receive those either. So I pretty much came in here like this.
Okay. Actually, it was included in our packet.
Okay.
As was with yourself. Actually, on page four for the administrative use permit, and it does indicate that this is a standard condition that the city gives to anyone that is required to obtain an administrative use permit. And it's the same language that's also used for the conditional use permit, and it was found on the same number, it was number four, and it was a separate resolution, but presented together at the same time. So this is why it's important for us to understand how we actually got here.
Right.
Because I think the residents who live near there, as well as the city, wants to understand how we got to this point.
Right. And I, I think, like I said, a lot of it before, it was, they, they gave me a problem with, with the music or loudness, and we never had any calls until we had the tent outside. Then we started getting complaints and calls about being loud. But a lot of the other stuff with gunshots and everything, wasn't anything with Rebel Yell, it was just the community. And I know, because I, I didn't allow them in there, you know, but they still gave problems, but that's not on me, you know, I tried. You know, nothing happened, shootings happened in there, no stabbing's happened in my place. I know, I just, I tried to make sure everybody was safe at all times. That's, and that's why I'm here today too. I want to make sure, whatever we can do to make it safer, let's do it, you know? But I was never approached by anybody to try to make it safer. And the times that the police department did come there, it was under different circumstances, you know? You can't try to talk to somebody when everybody's up in arms, you know? It should have been where somebody says, Eric, can we talk to you? Then let's talk, you know, let's try to work it out. But I'm willing to do that, whatever it takes.
Thank you. Um, hold on one second.
Sorry.
I guess you had mentioned that, you know, you tried, you know, to work with the police or to work with the cities, but one of the conditional use criteria, which is the FF, is the installations of the CCTV. Now, obviously, the police had mentioned that they've been asking for, and, and are you at least aware that you are supposed to have CCTV for that conditional use permit?
Yeah, I'm aware of that.
You are aware of it?
I'm aware, I mean, the only, I mean, it goes back to the incident, the first incident where the gun charges, it wasn't West Covina, but it was the sheriff department that came in.
Okay, no, 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 I mean, the fact that you are aware of it is wonderful. I guess now that you are aware of it, maybe perhaps you can disprove the police by providing them those videos.
Yes.
On the dates that they had mentioned and all the other videos that they had asked for.
Yeah, but I don't even have recordings of those dates, so.
Well, then. Well, then somehow ideally it would be nice if you can work with the police, assuming that you, you know, you want to work with them.
I do.
Right. So maybe you can talk with them, work with them to see if perhaps you can provide them the information that they had asked for, since you are aware of the.
Right, okay.
Requirements. Okay.
I have some questions. Okay, great. So, um, so you see you didn't have, you don't have footage of that during the time period? How, how back is your, what's, what amount of time is your CCTV cover? Is it three months, two months? What was the?
I don't, I have no knowledge of any of that, I promise you. Otherwise, I would explain that to you. I knew I had cameras and, you know, the time when, the first time that the police department came, but after that, it just wasn't, they weren't on, you know?
So you disconnected them after the sheriff's department incident?
The map?
What happened after? You said, oh, with the sheriffs?
Yeah. The first incident is they, they just rushed my place and the sheriff, the head guy, I guess, said, we're shutting you down. They slapped the phone out of my, out of my hand, threw me on, on the thing and that's when I became uncooperative. And then he beat me up in my office. That's why I have a limp to this day, the sheriff department beat me up. So that, and that's what happened. That's when I was kind of, I didn't want to cooperate, you know, with the police department. It wasn't their fault, but it was the sheriff department that did.
And was your CCTV cameras working or?
Yeah, at the time they were, yeah.
And after that?
No, they weren't.
You turned them off?
Yeah.
So every time the West Coast Police Department has asked you for assistance in solving a, I mean, certain instances, a major crime like a drive-by shooting or, or rape, you have refused to cooperate?
I take that back. There was times when, I guess it was still on, they came in, I go, go ahead and check my, my cameras, but on the outside, it only covers half of the, covered half of the parking lot. So whatever they were requesting wasn't covering it. It was better covered by, by the liquor store than it was where I was. But I did tell them to come in and take it or take a look at it and they said, it doesn't help us.
So at no time you, did you refuse to provide?
No, I did, I did actually say, go ahead and look at the cameras. I did.
After the sheriff's incident?
After the sheriff incident.
And, and then if you were not, do, do you usually show up every day? Are you full time there or off and on?
I was for the first four years and the last couple of years, it's been kind of tough, you know, for me physically, so I haven't been there all, all the time, but I'm here right now. There was a couple of incidents, like I said, with the corner gang and there's another gang that was happening and that's why I came down the hill, because I know a lot of them and, and, and I had to deal with it, you know, so I'm gonna deal with it.
And, okay, and if you were not there and let's just say, if it's, if the lieutenant or detective coming in and I talk to one of your employees, I'm assuming they're asking for a manager.
Yeah.
Does your, I'm just trying to understand your protocols in place. If a manager was informed by the police department that they needed something or footage or cooperation, does that manager know to contact you regarding those issues?
Right. And normally I was there and even when I was gone all the time, I'm normally, normally there. So, and if, if somebody's doing an investigation, they, they would call me, you know, and they would come down.
And there was no reason, for times you didn't, if just say, times you did not cooperate or times you, you refused to provide footage, at any of those times, did you fear for your life or any threats or any reasons unknown to this commission or to the police department?
No. A lot of times, like I said, the, the cameras weren't on, where, when they were on, I guess I'd go ahead and take a look, you know, so.
I would think if you weren't gonna be there for the last couple of years, you would make sure those cameras were on.
Right. And that's, okay.
What I'd like to see is that since you like to cooperate with the city, this is the first time we heard about this bar incident.
Right.
This is the first time, so it, I mean, I'm not sure how many people hear about the bar incidents, but this is the first time I heard about you guys. I guess my curiosity starts is when that the police had dates of May 24th, disturbing calls regarding bartender beating up a customer.
Right.
And whether he beats up or not as an owner or as a manager, I'd like to see if you do have some videos to.
Right.
If, if you didn't have it for the police, maybe show it to us.
Right.
Whether they're not beating up or they're beating up, I had no idea and, and that would be nice. There are quite a few incidents from 24th of 2023rd, January 28th. So they listed a few items here. So I guess my curiosity start hearing from what the police talked about earlier and listening to you right now is that you are willing to cooperate and I'd like to, I'd like to see that. And if you can help us provide any of these dates, just these dates and give it to us and let us see it.
Okay.
Now, obviously, you were mentioning the outside, the outside of the restaurants. However, this restaurant is only a thousand something square foot? I forgot the exact number.
Twenty-two, twenty-two hundred square feet.
From a thousand to twenty-two? Joanne, can you confirm that?
A thousand seventy-five, is it larger? The, the previous staff report for, for the conditional use permit said a thousand seventy-five.
It's no bigger. I think it is.
So if it's a, let just, if the report said it's a thousand, that's what we're going by and I don't have a measuring tape at your place and I guess my question is, a thousand square foot, just imagine a little bit over two, two-car garage door. That's how big it is.
Right.
A, a two-car garage door would be a 400 square foot minimum. So if you add a little bit over two-car garage door and that, you shouldn't have to have that many videos in there to be able to see that whole area. I guess back down to the, to confirm, to see if you have it or you don't have it and, and I like to see that you're complying with the police and us so that we know that, hey, look, you do have videos that we can see and what's going on. So I would appreciate that.
I would definitely a hundred percent check that, but like I said, I, I don't think they're working it, but I'll check. I promise you, I'll check.
So are you saying that you're, you are not aware of the 50-plus calls by the police?
I'm not, I mean, just when they presented it to, to, to me lately, that's, that's it. Yeah.
So all the police there every night isn't an indication that you have a problem?
They weren't, they weren't there every night, that's what I'm telling you. I've, I've been there, so they're, they're not there every night, they're not.
You just said they were.
Were.
Earlier, you said they're there every night and you're happy about it.
Lately, since I reopened. I just reopened, we haven't had any problems since I reopened. They've been there every day since I just got my ABC license renewed. So they've been there every day and, and I like them there, but I haven't had any problems. You know, when they're there, there's no problems and there's no, there's nobody in the corners anymore. It's, it's the safest place it is. I keep everything well lit. If there's any tagging, I take it out, the trash area, the, it's, it's a nice place. If you go any restaurant or bar in West Covina, that's, that's the place where, in my opinion, is the safest. It's just where I'm at in the community, it's a tough neighborhood. Every gang member wants to claim it, every biker gang wants to claim it, but no one has and no one will.
From all the calls that were occurring and a different instances of crime occurring outside, did you take any steps to remedy the situation after these crimes were occurring on your, either in your premises or right outside your premises, knowing that those, those are patrons of your, your restaurant?
A hundred percent I did. You know, what he's talking about with the shooting outside, I took the tent out the next day and the tent was gone. Okay? But I had no control over the guy stopping and shooting, you know, it was just the guy that stopped and shoot on Valinda, but it wasn't worth anybody getting hurt at Rebel Yell. So I took it off, you know? And I, and I, like I said, when I open the place, I make sure it's well lit, graffiti's not there and then, and then I have to kick people out, I kick them out, whoever's a problem, I'll kick them out.
And just so I understand, the camera system is unplugged or it's broken?
That part I'm not sure. It, it could be broken. I think it might be broken, yeah.
Okay.
Well, no, he said he unplugged it earlier.
I'm not sure. It could be unplugged or broken. I don't know, I'm not sure. I'll deal with it.
But, but earlier, I'm sorry, earlier when we were talking about this, the compliance, which is the, for the conditional use permit to comply with the conditional use permit, you, you do know about the CT, CCTV?
Right.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any more questions?
I have a few questions.
Commissioner Lewis? We, you know, we'll look into the, into the cameras, make sure they're all working. Whatever the problem is, we'll fix that, you know? So, you know, I think something that needs to, that's very important.
Well, if people are being looked at, they'll be more accountable. And if you unplug it, it's because you have things you don't want them to be seen.
And not in my case, like I said, in the, in the first thing that happened when I opened up, I'm still learning about running a restaurant. I got attacked, okay? That's why I was kind of defensive with, with, with the police. I, I was attacked. So that's why I got defensive.
Then I don't think that was because of the camera.
A hundred percent was the camera.
That's the situation.
He wanted to see the camera and I, I was gonna show it to him and that's when he slapped the, the phone out of my hand and, and he beat me up in, in my office for that.
But if he, if he did beat you up, you would want to show and prove your video.
No, but there's no cameras in my office. I, I wish I had cameras in my office, but there's no cameras in my office.
No, if I'm not mistaken, that was when you're.
It wasn't anything.
When someone ran into her with a gun and.
Right.
You got the gun, so.
That's how it started and that's, I guess, maybe I was a little defensive towards that, but I'm willing to do whatever it takes to make it safer and it's, it's a pretty, in my opinion, it's safe. It's the surrounding area that's a tough neighborhood, whether I'm open or not, it's gonna be.
And you were, you were convicted of that, right? Or you took a?
I dropped it to a misdemeanor.
Misdemeanor, okay.
And I didn't, yeah, community service was dismissed and everything.
Okay, great.
Okay, I have a few questions. Commissioner Lewis? With, with regard to security, do you currently employ any security?
I do.
And how many security guards do you?
Normally, one security guard on Thursday, Friday and Saturday.
Okay, so they're not there all the time?
No.
Okay. And so is your, is it your understanding that this conditional use permit, excuse me, resolution number 15-5783, which requires security personnel, only requires security personnel on Thursday, Friday and Saturday?
No, it wasn't, no, no.
Okay, so currently, there's only security personnel working three nights?
Right.
Per week, correct?
Right.
Not during the day?
No.
Okay.
Normally.
What are the, what are the, what are the typical hours that they work?
From normally eight to, to closing.
Okay, so 2:00 AM or later?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. And then with regard to, and, and just, just to confirm, those are actual employees, those are not, those are not contractors?
No, it's a security, security guy.
Is it a security company that you contract through?
I hire security companies and I'm not sure if this is a guy that's from them, you know what I mean? Because I did hire security companies, but this is a new guy. So I, I gotta double check if he's actually, you know, with them. But he's, he's my best guy, actually, yeah.
So I'm, I'm confused, sorry. I just want to make sure I'm clear on this. So does he, is he your employee?
I guess he, I pay him, so I guess he is, yeah, yeah.
He's on your payroll?
Um, yeah.
Okay, all right. So he doesn't work for another company?
No, he doesn't.
Okay, all right. And he works three nights a week?
Yeah.
Okay, got it. Okay, and then, so with regard to his duties, what, what are, what are his duties while he's on the clock for the three nights?
Yeah, to make sure that, you know, watching whoever comes in, you know? And then if some bad people come in, I just tell them, let me know, we close early.
So, so just, just to make sure, are we just talking about the, the front door and the interior?
Right.
Okay, so he's not patrolling the parking lot?
No, he doesn't.
Okay, all right. Are you aware of the fact that your, your, the conditions of your, of, of your conditional use permit and administrative use permit require patrol of the surrounding parking lot in the vicinity?
Yeah. I do, I was trying to get help from the ownership to get patrolling, but it's, it's, it's tough to keep all these, you know, bills paid, so I understand that, so.
Okay. And then with regard to, with regard to, to live music, does your establishment actually have live music going on?
We did before, before COVID, then after COVID, but then I got shot, shut down for taxes, so it's kind of like dead right now, there's, there's no.
So, so currently you don't have any?
That to me, I mean, I love live music, I play music, so I love, I want that still there, but that needs to be removed and it makes it safer, I'm okay removing that, too.
Okay, when was the last time you had live music?
Uh, we had a DJ Saturday, I think it was last Saturday.
Right, and, and that's inside?
Inside.
Okay, all right. And at that time, are the, are the, are the doors kept closed?
Closed.
Okay. And are you aware of any calls, are you, you aware of any instances where the police have contacted anyone that works for you or yourself regarding any noise disturbances over the past four years? So no one has ever come to your establishment with regard to any noise complaints?
Never.
From, from the West Covina Police Department?
No.
Never?
No, no, not to me, yeah.
Have any of the neighbors?
No, I haven't talked to any of the neighbors about that. I mean, I read the report with the neighbors, but that's the first time I've seen it.
Okay. And then going, let's see, one second here. And then as far as, as far as your contacts with, with the city of West Covina, so at some point in time, you applied for a conditional use permit and an administrative use permit with the city, correct?
Right.
Okay, and then, so, so you, you've been in contact with, with the city before, right?
As far as what?
I mean, just in general, you, you know how to contact the city?
Yes, of course.
Okay. Have you ever made the city aware of any criminal concerns with regard to your establishment?
The only, like I said, the only calls that I made was when there was, you never know who's gonna walk in there and start trying to take over, over that place. It was when there was a certain gang that was there and I did call the police department and say, is there any way you guys could come late at night and just drive by or come? And, and they would leave, you know, but no one ever came. So that was one part. Unfortunately, the lady got killed, so they're not there anymore, but I had to deal with that on the outside. But that's, that's something that they came after too, which Rebel Yell was closed. And a lot of that gunshot that they're talking about, it came after too, because I remember, you know, it was all, Rebel Yell was already closed. So they were just hanging out there, just hanging out there, you know?
Okay, so when, and when was that?
That was not too long ago.
So what?
Within the last year, they were hanging out, yeah.
Over the past year, what, during, what, what time over the past year was Rebel Yell closed? closed?
Um, we just opened up three weeks ago.
Okay, so you've, just, just so I understand, so you've only been open three weeks this, in the entirety of 2023?
No, 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 no. I was shut down for like a month and a half, and I just reopened like three weeks ago. So I was opened up before that, too.
Okay, so you were open for all of January?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it was all January, it might have been part of January.
Okay.
Yeah.
How about February?
February, March, yeah. I'm pretty sure, can't, I'm trying to remember when I got closed down, January, February, March, April, yeah, I was opened up all that time, yeah.
Okay, so it was just, what, July or so?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
July, yeah.
Right, okay. And then, let's see, as, as far as, as far as your calls to law enforcement, you, you said you've only made one call?
No, I made a few calls, you know, just, just to say if there's any way, because I know when there's bad people out there, and I say, is there any way you can just come by or drive by, but my response was, we can't do anything unless something happens. And then I said, all right, so that's when I have to deal with that, you know?
So how many times, just because I'm sure you've seen in the, in the packet that they've presented, there's quite a, quite a number of calls, right? You've seen that, right?
That was the same kind of list I had before I opened, when Rebel wasn't even open. It was just as big, yeah.
Understood.
A lot of it, I would say fifty fifty is liquor store, maybe fifty is mine, but I don't, definitely not eighty, you know?
Understood. Just want to understand, so are, are a number of these, and I, I don't know how many calls there are initiated here, but approximately how many do you think of, of this list were initiated by you?
I'm gonna say thirty percent of those.
Thirty percent of those, okay, all right. And, and do you have a specific recollection with regard to what the calls for service were?
Normally, like, if there's a bar fight or something like that, those are the calls, you know? So, you know, some of those were correct, and some of them were not correct, but, you know, sometimes there's, there's bar fights in there, and we try to break them up, you know?
So, so you were somebody who, who have, has worked for you, has called
Yes.
Law enforcement regarding bar fights in your establishment?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. And have you, just curious, with regard to those who, who you or staff has seen involved in those, were they, were they trespassed from your property?
Some of them, I mean, some of them were in the, in the bar, and we had a bar fight, they were in the bar, you know what I mean? So, yeah, there was something there, but a lot of them were outside, beyond my control, you know? And normally, like I said, if we close at two, I get everybody out, and sometimes.
Let's, let's focus specifically on what's going on inside the bar, okay? So with regard to those who have been involved in bar fights in your bar, have you trespassed them? Have you asked, have you asked law enforcement to trespass them from your property?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
In every instance?
No, not in every instance. I would say in the last couple of years, like, there probably maybe, I could give you five or six fights that have been in there, five or six, that's it, you know, inside the bar.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I have a question. The bartender that got in the fight with a, I guess, a patron or customer, does he still work for you?
It's her, yeah, she does.
Okay. And after these bar fights, did you ever thought about, after these bar fights, you never hired more security afterwards, right? You kept the same amount of security at all times?
We really didn't have, like I said, it was, it was, it was stuffed, we, inside, we've never had really much of a problem, because we all work together and trying to make everybody safe.
So that's a no, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions?
Yes, so are your bartenders, I mean, obviously, your small bar, you know, I don't wanna call it whole, no, I've never been there.
It is a whole.
But are they trained to not to over-serve your patrons?
Yes, I mean, we've never had any.
Are you, do you have, is it so much, you know, you know, so busy some nights that they cannot?
Right.
See how many?
That's extremely important, yeah, extremely important to me is that. I tell them, if someone's, you know, under the influence, we stop, and, and we have counts of serving, and then we offer everybody Ubers and, and lifts, so I try to make sure everybody's safe and, and not over, ever important. We, in six years, we've been open, we've never been cited for any of that, so, and I'm sure they've been in there looking, you know, but we haven't been, so I try to be on top of it. It's hard.
No cameras, so you really can't say how many have been over-served or not, and it usually does happen in the little bars, because like a little home away from home, nobody's watching, the wife is not there, or the boyfriend or whatever, but, you know, it, it happens a lot, and it sounds, you know, maybe, again?
Yeah.
I don't know, I'm not there, but, you know, it sounds that that could be a problem.
Okay.
Any more questions?
Well, I'd just like to go over some of the administrative use permit that they listed in here. This is like two thousand fifteen, so we were thinking about eight years ago, when you applied for the permit and it was permitted. And I like to read, basically, if you look at page four, item number four, it stated the administrative use permit shall not be effective for any purpose until the owner of the property involved has filed at the office of the Community Development Director his affidavit stating he is aware of and accept all conditions. And then, you know, go on. And then basically, the conditions is, one of the condition is that a copy of this resolution shall be kept at the front counter at all times. That's, that's, if you look at the next page, which is page five, that's item number G. If you look at number D, they say the approved shall be, shall you, shall use, wait, the approved use shall not create a public nuisance, right? And then it went on to F, the business owner and manager of the establishment shall be strictly accountable for compliance with all the conditions. So this is back in two thousand fifteen, years, or, or you mentioned six years ago, but it's actually two thousand fifteen, that you need to comply with all these conditions.
I understand.
The other one was that, item number K on the same page, the administrative use permit may be revoked, amended, and suspended by the Community Development Director under city code. So that's, it's all listed in there. And there is three more items I'd like to go over, which is, if you go to the next page, page six, that would be Q, that would be R, security personnel will patrol the surrounding parking lot and vicinity to ensure patrons are neither loitering or causing undue disturbance. That's R. Now we go on to T, basically, all trash will be disposed of in, in outdoor trash bins and dumpsters prior to eleven PM. That's not as important, but it is important.
Yeah, I know.
Okay? Then they went on to W, review by the planning commission of the operation permitted by administrative use permit is required after one year. So just because you got the administrative use permit, this doesn't mean that it lasts forever. You had to comply with all these codes, that you're supposed to put a copy at the count, at the front desk.
Okay.
Now, one of the very thing that the own, because whenever you get a special use permit, such as a conditional use permit, or AUP, which is administrative use permit, it get distributed to all the department, whether it's the fire, the public works, or the police. Now, the police department requirements for this conditional use permit was that the applicant shall install a CCTV monitoring system, which is, which is subject to inspection prior to opening. The requirement are as follows, so it lists, I don't know, probably ten items, the particular type of camera, and also it went on recordings preserved for a minimum of thirty days. And then you went down DVD must contain a USB port, so, for the police department. So all these items, it, it's not just from the community development, but it's also from other department as well. And this one item that the police had asked for, for you to comply with the police department, it, it, it seems like you have, you said you have, so I like to see if you did have it, I like to see all the items that the police had asked for, to see if we can see those videos as well.
Okay.
So the, these are some of the items, and I wish you, you know, it did stated all that in here, I'm just reading out loud so that we, not only the planning commissions and also you and also the police also know what their requirements are and, and what, what we're looking for. Thank you.
Great, any more questions? Okay, thank you, go ahead and sit down.
Which, which, what's the process from here? I'm not familiar with the process.
So now we're gonna open public hearing, so we want to stand by, and then we're gonna call them back up to give a final statement.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So we'll continue on public hearing and hear testimony from those in favor of revocation or modification. Is anyone here against? Okay, now we're here to, now we're here testimony from those of, what? Oh, you're, you're against the revocation or for the revocation? Okay, what's her name? Yeah.
She's opposed. In favor.
Yeah, yeah, what, what's her name? Huh?
Your name?
Anna, okay, perfect. Okay, there was just some confusion there, but we clarify, so we'll now call those, hear testimony, and those in favor of revoking the license, and we'll now call on Anna Murrow.
I just made some quick notes.
I'm gonna pull it down, yeah.
Sorry. Just made some quick notes on our experiencing, and it's, as a family. So I've been in, living in that resident for fifty-two years, and my back wall is right across the street from the bar, and I've noticed it since they've put out the tents. For the past few years, it's been very scary. We've heard numerous gunshots, the loud music, the loud voices, you can hear everything, even with your windows closed, so it is, I believe, a nuisance to our neighborhood. And a lot of neighbors feel the same way, they just maybe don't call the police, or they don't state anything, but it doesn't feel safe, and the owner, he says, okay, he can't control that, but we as neighbors believe that ever since they had the tents outside, it's been attracting a very, very shady environment, which is all the gangs and things like that. They've always been there, but I've been living there, my daughter used to work at Stater Brothers, and we don't recall, like, all of that type of environment prior to those tents being outside. So I just wanted to voice my opinion as far as, like, keeping, allowing that to be out there. I don't think it's fair to us as neighbors. It, it just, especially the people that live right behind the bar, think about it, if you live there and you had to go to work every single day, right? Whether it's Friday, Saturday, Sunday, my daughter's an EMT, there's times where she can't even sleep because of the noise, that we have double pane windows, and we can still hear that environment that was outside. So yes, it's not out there anymore, but when, if you allow that to come back, I don't think the neighbors are gonna be happy. And it's just not fair that that's there, to be allowed to have all that there. Maybe if it's on, in the inside as it used to be years ago, but not in the parking lot, because all this disturbance and nuisance, it's out in the parking lot. And when we drive by, whether I want to go to Stater Brothers, I don't want to enter in, in that entrance, it's very scary because of the type of environment that it's attracting. And prior to those tents being out there, I don't think it was that bad, maybe not even with the liquor store there. I don't recall any of that, neither does my family. So I just came to state that. I don't know if it's valid or not, but I am a neighbor, so, a resident, actually, there. I think that's pretty much it, just wanted to voice my opinion rather than in an email. I don't know if there's any questions for me, or?
No, there's no questions. I mean, can we ask the speaker questions? Okay, go ahead.
In the last three weeks since they've been open, have you had any?
Um, no. Like I said, it was just when the tents were out, so that's what my concern is, that that is going to be allowed again, because, again, we never really, as a family, our neighbors used to comment, and now it's like, when it was out there, it was very disturbing. So that's what we're concerned about, is that going to be allowed again? You know, the tents, the music, the loud, I mean, during the week, who wants to hear that? We work, we, most of us, ninety-nine percent, we get up, four o'clock, five o'clock in the morning, you know, I'm a secretary, I'm here because I'm trying to voice my opinion, you know, my opinion, and, and it's just, and my daughter, too, I mean, the dog even got anxiety when you're hearing all the noise in the backyard or the gunshots, and I don't remember all the years living there that it was, it's been that bad, like that, that it has been in the past two years, prior to the three weeks of what you're saying, you know?
So how long have they been removed?
Um.
Or should we be asking somebody else how long?
I mean, the question I have, I mean, back to that question, is you say you heard gunshots, so?
In the past, we've, we've heard gunshots, reports, you know, like, I'm sure, not to elaborate so much, but I know that the cops have been called, we see cops there, you know, if we're going into the, Stater Brothers closes at eleven.
So for example, gunshots, I, I.
Or maybe they're fireworks, but they heard, they sound like gunshots.
Yeah, according to the reports, they were gunshots, so if there were gunshots, I mean, according to the police reports, there were gunshots, how do you feel as a resident? I think regardless if a tent was out there or not, those were gunshots, and those were bullets. How do you feel as a resident? That's, I think.
It was very scary, yes, but what I'm saying is, we would, we've heard it more in the past two years since the tents were out. That's when we started noticing the activity, the crowds, and it wasn't just coming from the liquor store, we've been living there all of our life, it's since all of that was out there, just, it was just attracting, like, you know, a bad crowd, and, and the location of it, maybe if it was, I don't know, near where other bars are, or big bars, but you're right next door to somebody's house, so if you think about it, I'm talking too close, if you think about it, like, if that were your home, would you want to live next to a bar that has all of that chaos, noise, and it's open seven days a week? You know, that's, that bothers the neighbors. It is not a peaceful neighborhood to be hearing all that. So it's not to close down the bar, but can it be like maybe how it was before? I don't know if he was the owner, different owners, I don't know, I don't go to bars, I don't go to that bar, but just something where it's, whatever's going on is inside. That's really what I'm trying to voice, like, not have where it's attracting anybody that walks by.
Great, any more questions? No, that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
And then, just, just for clarification, as I know it was a little confusing for the pink cards today, the next speaker we have is Mario Savararo. Are you for the revocation or against the revocation? Okay.
Lot of stuff to cover here. Gotta state my name and district, or?
Go ahead, if you want.
Uh, Mario Savararo, District Three. Start, this place is just bad geography, just gonna say, I've been a resident in West Covina a long time, I recall it being Magic Mushroom, I recall it being around the corner, recall murders back in ninety-one that were as Magic Mushroom, I remember stabbings and shootings around the corner, even bomb goal activity as far back as two thousand eight. It's just been a hotbed for street gangs, biker gangs, and drug dealers, it's, it's known as that, and the bad geography lies in that, it lies in a, I guess, gang active area, and not in the middle of a city, it's at the edge of three cities, so you're gonna have turf issues there. Like I said, a lot to cover here. I have seen dropped off foot traffic there, typically you don't have a lot of people walking around there, they get dropped off, they get dropped off on Dory, I think I was looking at the, what do you call it, event log, and saw that there was a lot of suspicious vehicles being called out along Dory, makes sense to me, get dropped off there, go do your business, come back. Extremely dangerous because of the alley that is behind there, so if somebody does something wrong, they're not gonna go down Velinda, that's where, you know, West Covina's gonna come up, where Sheriff's gonna come through another area, they're gonna go down that alley, jump into somebody's backyard, head down Dory to the other street and, you know, try to get away. It's just really bad geography. As a former bartender, bartender for six years, we know what's going on in the bar. You know, we can see, it's our responsibility, like, somebody said not to over-serve, you know, it's our, our, we can kind of control what's going on in the bar a lot of times, we know who's going in, who's going out, we know what's happening, we can tell if somebody's having a bad day, if someone's, you know, escaping some, you know, domestic violence, we're there, we see it. So when the owner here is telling me that he's just unaware of all these things, if a rape occurred in my bar, I would know, even as a bartender, I would know about that. It seems to me like will for ignorance or just incompetence, it's just, it just really does not seem right. With regards to non-cooperation with police, I, in my opinion, feel that that's either usually due to fear or complicity, that's just the way I look at that. And when this thing was around the corner bar, I had a friend that was a chef there, you know, I, she would tell me stories. I've had friends' bands play there, almost seemed when they first started, whatever business first started there, it started doing well, and then a year or two later, the element came around, and it's been there for forty years. Let me just look, type in twenty-one hundred South Velinda in Google, and you'll see the list of things that have come up there. Let's see, lastly, if I were a bartender or an employee of this establishment, and it was looking like it gets license revoked, I'd be here. Okay, so last, the other question, where are the employees? So those are my statements.
Thank you. Now, is there anyone else in favor of revocation or modification in the audience? We'll now move on to testimony of those opposed to revocation or modification. And no one's here. Okay, now, will the permitee like to make a final sworn statement and rebuttal to the comments that remain? Or his representative?
I'd just like to point out.
Go ahead.
A few, a few things, the last speaker, I think his name is Mario, he mentioned that it is a bad geography, and, and I agree, it's, it's a bad geography, and, and, you know, the bar is not, did not create the geography, it was, that's the place that where, where it inherited the geography, and, and it actually, it made a big improvement from what it was before, because as I mentioned, I, so I recall, you know, before it was a bike. you know, before it was a biker bar, and it was a lot of, a lot of criminal activity. I mean, uh, there has been some here, from what I hear, you know, I haven't witnessed it, but from what I hear. But it's been a big, it's a big improvement from where it was before, and and we aim to improve it further with everybody's cooperation. As Anna, who spoke before, said, she's been living there for a long time, I think fifty-two years or something. And she lives across the street. And she mentioned that she didn't have much of a problem until the tent went out. When the, when the tent, when during COVID, they put a tent down in the parking lot to be able to operate, you know, with COVID, under COVID conditions. And that did create more problems because there was music out there and there was, the activity was not contained inside, but it was outside. And obviously, it would be, uh, uh, more of a nuisance to the neighbors. So I agree with her. But she did mention that during that period, it was bad, but she would like to see it go back to where it was before the period. And we would like that to, the tent is no longer there and and the owner does not plan to put it back up there, you know? COVID is over, at least the restrictions that we had during COVID is over. And and that was the only reason it was, the tent went up, uh, because of COVID. Uh, so now that that's not a concern, I think we can deal at least not have to deal with that concern. Uh, Eric, would you like to make any statements? So what I'd like to ask if the commission, you know, would so kindly, um, agree to give us a chance or give the owner a chance to remediate the problems. And you mentioned several things that are in the conditional use permit and the affidavit and everything else. And, um, we'll plan to abide by every, all of that. And if there's a specific plan that the police would like to recommend, we would welcome that also. Because they've got a lot of expertise in 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 law and order and crime prevention. So, uh, the the owner is pleading with this commission to allow him to continue to operate and mediate the problem. And a probationary period would be welcome to see if that, if the if the conditions that are implemented are working or not.
Thank you. At this time, we will now close public hearing. I will now open commission discussion and deliberation. Assistant City Attorney, can you please clarify the statement and direction to the commission?
Thank you, Chair. The chair, the commission has several options in front of it, uh, which include revocation or modification of the existing CUP and/or AUP. Uh, you could make a finding that the evidence is not sufficient. You could also, um, make a motion for a continuance if there's a desire to monitor or or to revisit or review in a three-month, six-month, whatever period the commission would like. If you do make a motion, uh, for revocation or modification, the required findings have been set forth in your agenda packet, and they are in the municipal code. Um, the ones identified by staff were subsection A, finding of an adverse impact on the public health safety or a presence of a nuisance. Um, or subsection E, which provided that the conditions of approval, uh, are not, they're not in compliance with the conditions of approval. So I I would advise that if you're making a motion along those lines, that it would include the appropriate finding supporting your motion. Any questions or?
Thank you. Any, any questions for the city assistant city attorney? Oh, okay. We're now open, uh, deliberation and discussion by the commission.
Chair, um, sorry, if I may, prior to commissioner deliberation. Um, as the city attorney, um, mentioned, one of the options was to, that the planning commission can take is to, for continuance for monitoring. Um, although staff is still, has has not changed, um, the recommendation for for revocation. However, if the commission would like to consider monitoring, um, staff is suggesting a, um, a three-month monitoring period um, at the property owner's expense, um, in taking it back to the planning commission, three months, six months, nine months, and so forth. Um, and to direct the applicant or the permittee to close um, and not open until staff ensures that the CCTV system is oper, is in operation. Um, and if the planning commission wishes to consider, um, revising, um, the conditions of approval, staff is, would like to ask the planning commission to consider, um, adopting revised conditions that would allow, um, or that would require the applicant to hire one state licensed security guard, um, during the daytime and two state licensed security guy, guard, um, during night, then, um, the nighttime after, after six, until the last person, and to stay there until the last person, um, customer or employee of the facility leaves. So, um, those are the conditions of approval, modified conditions of approval, and also, um, suggested, um, can monitoring continuance for staff in case the planning commission is, um, is willing to, um, take one of those other actions.
And just to clarify, what is the city's recommendation today? I'm sorry. What is staff's recommendation today and what is the West Covina Police Department's recommendation today?
Staff is supporting the West Covina Police Department. Our, our recommendation is for revocation, and that has not changed.
Thank you. So now we're open discussion deliberation. Commissioner Lewis?
Uh, sure. So, um, you know, I'll, I'll lead off with this. Obviously, anytime you have to consider, um, making decisions that impact someone's livelihood, I certainly don't take that lightly. Um, and I, I, but I, but I will say, some of the answers that were given to me tonight by the permittee make me extremely concerned. Um, it's, it's not just, it's, it's, frankly, it appears to be either willful ignorance or frankly, just, I, 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 I don't know. I, I, I can't figure that one out right now. Um, but one of the things that that I'll say is, um, the fact that, the the fact that there isn't a plan provided to us to frankly help us help you, I, I view that as very problematic. It's not like, it's not like the permittee was unaware of the fact that this was initiated. Um, this has been in the works for months. Obviously, this is the first time I've seen it. But the 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 fact that this is not something that, particularly something as simple as CCTV months ago, that could have been dealt with. Um, I, I, I will say though, I'm, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm inclined to, um, to take some wait-and-see approach as to certain aspects of this. But my, my initial inclination is that the, the extended time periods for the, um, for, for the, um, hours of operation need to go. It, it should be no later than than midnight. Uh, frankly, and and the live music, amplified music should go, period. Um, it's the, the, this notion that, um, this notion that no one seems, that no one on the permittee side seems to be aware of the fact that the noise issue is even an issue. It, it's just, it's not credible to me. So, uh, you know, these are things that should be easy to deal with. Um, and and also, on the security side, it's just, you know, saying that security is important and then having someone there three nights a week, you know, given everything that's going on in that area, you know, it, it's, it's disturbing. Um, and obviously, um, we don't want to see, frankly, an attractive nuisance uh, in the city that is just a, an ongoing problem, um, for everyone in the immediate vicinity. So I think, I, I, I think realistically, um, you know, some of the wait-and-see monitoring, uh, at, at the, at the permittee's expense for three months, the hiring of a security guard, um, or a security guard during the day, two, two for the evenings until close, um, and, uh, cutting down the hours to at the latest midnight. Um, and no, no amplification of of any kind of music, no live music. Um, you know, TV's fine, um, so long as it's kept at an acceptable level such that it's not disturbing the, the immediately adjacent residences. And then, um, and then with regard to this tent, this tent's got to go. I mean, it's, it's gone, but I, I, I think it can't come back. No outdoor seating, nothing like that. No parking along that, along that alley either. Um, I, I, I think this is sort of the bare minimum that, that I think we can sort of wait and see. But I, I, I gotta be honest, it's, it's, this has got to be an ongoing thing. If, if it's, if it's not, this should, you know, as, as much as I have zero desire whatsoever to to impact someone's livelihood, this is, this is not acceptable, as is. And frankly, I would vote to revoke in the event that this is an ongoing thing that is coming back here. So that's my, those are my thoughts and.
Thank you.
Back to the chair.
And we'll go to Vice Chair Williams.
Okay. It concerns me that the applicant who, um, originally applied for the administrative use permit and the conditional use permit back in twenty fifteen, um, appears to have, for whatever reason, agreed to an affidavit, because I understand what staff is saying. There was an affidavit that listed the items that we were talking about. And it has been eight years. That is very disconcerting. Um, the residents, which I did take note, there are residents within forty feet of that particular location. Yes, there's an alley, but they're within forty feet. Um, the officer, uh, did explain the different calls. Um, it appears that there have been more than fifty calls to that particular location, which was documented in the report that was presented to us. I find that very concerning.
Thank you, Vice Chair. We'll now move on to Commissioner Basera.
You know, so much was talked about this evening and as Commissioner Williams or Vice Chair Williams was saying, that it is disconcerting that so many, so many situations had occurred and there's little to no knowledge of it by, by the permittee. And, um, you know, Commissioner Lewis was talking about the expense for, for the permittee, you know, um, what we could do, you know, I, I agree, it's, it's hard to, to make this decision. You know, you never want to take away someone's livelihood. But at what expense? Then it would be at the expense of the residents. If something was to happen, then that falls on us. So if I was to vote, it would be to revoke.
Thank you. Commissioner Basera, and we'll move on to Commissioner Yang.
Um. I actually heard a lot, um, this evening, and I guess my very concern is that, just even from the very beginning, um, it's a special use permit that you had requested and the city had granted. Not one, you actually requested one, two, and three special permit. The first one was additional use permit, and then there's a conditional use permit, and then there is a extended hour to all the way to two P M. And each time you requested, since two thousand fifteen, the city complied. Everything that you wanted was complied and keep giving in, you know, to to help your business. Now that it came to this point, and and even from the beginning, you know, this permit was also has its conditions. And I find that many of those conditions was not even followed, or you had just claimed that you didn't even know about it, some of them. But at least some of them, you admit that you are aware of them. So it's very concerning that you're asking us to, 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 you know, work with you and give you chances. But at the same time, all the, all the conditions, we had been working with you. It's not like we have not. So I guess my, my very concern is that, you know, you know, you're not supposed to create a public nuisance. But at the same time, when there is two hundred calls since two thousand twenty-one, you kind of said, well, I didn't really know about it. So it's a concerning to me that the city have complied and given to what it is that you asked for. You wanted longer business hour. Okay, they said, okay. But when it comes to even looking after your own shops, regarding having security that you know you're supposed to have, but at the same time, you're like, okay, I'll do it half of the time or whatever time it is that you come up with. You're not even working with the city. A copy of the resolution was supposed to be at the front desk. So obviously, every day for the last eight years, you should have this copy. So at any moment that you're not aware of, even regarding the camera, that if the police, not once, not twice, but there's quite a few time that they had asked for. And if you were to look at it, it's the police department requirements under one of those conditions. But then it's almost like you, you said, you, I don't know. What is it your reason behind not wanting to work with them or not wanting to comply with the conditions that had, they worked with you from the beginning? So it's very disheartening to hear all that from you when the, when the police have been working with you and also the city has been working with you. So it's really hard. And I do want to work with you in a sense that, you know, am I taking your livelihood away? Based on from two thousand eight until now, after two hundred calls already? And the police had stopped by various times to a point that at this point right now, they're just basically saying that it's just too much and you're not complying. So that's just one part of it. So I don't know what more can we actually help you with. So if we have to vote, I would revoke this as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Yang. And I'll say is that it's very hard for me to understand that after these shootings, after these fights, you, you continue to, you kept your employee after, after major crimes occurred somehow, and I think one time you said you unplugged it, then it went from, it may be broken, the camera system. Um, you know, these are victims and regardless, I mean, i-if, I know you indicated allegations against the Sheriff's Department and how they treated you, and and I'm sorry for that if they did, but, you know, our West Covina police officers, our lieutenants, our captains, our chiefs are all kept to a very high standard by the city council, the city of West Covina. And and their mission is to serve and to protect the community that they serve and many of them live in. And having, or having a system that's broken or or being unplugged during these crimes are occurring is very dangerous, not only for those victims who I believe one died because of the shooting one time. Or, or our officers responding, you know, these cameras are designed for public safety. These cameras could save at times, could save an officer's life who are, who's responding to a nine-one-one call of shootings going on. And they're responding to these calls where in times they're left with dead-end investigations because the camera system wasn't working. times they're left with dead-end investigations because a camera system wasn't working, or to what they're stating, non-cooperation by the, by the business entity. That's very bad for our community and our residents because it is investing a tremendous amount of public resources to have three to four to six officers respond to your establishment. We have over 120,000 residents in the city of West Covina. Having our officers, users, resources, or even having to patrol, extra patrol, because you chose not to hire more security, or not to have a licensed security guard, is putting a burden on the city of West Covina and its public safety. And it is, there is so many residents in our city that, who need to call, or who have emergencies, but it creates a shortage of officers and officers have to be there knowing that, you know what, let's send an officer to Valinda and Amar because we know something might happen. That's a burden, that, that's something that, that we hope our officers, we could send our officers more to other areas in, in West Covina, like our shopping malls or other areas, or into residential streets. That's the idea, having our officers patrol our local streets, but it creates a burden when our officers are, have to, in, in order to maintain public safety, have to, are forced to respond in, in large amounts because they know a major crimes are occurring at a business entity. And so, and again, whatever this commission decides today, you have, you have the option, you have the right to appeal it to the city council for its final decision. But with that being said, I would like to make a motion to support the staff's recommendation and the West Covina Police Department's recommendation that your permit be revoked for conditional use permit number 15-05 and the administrative use permit number 15-09, category exemption for the property located at 2050 South Valinda Avenue. And I say that because you had, make that motion because you had multiple chances to remedy the situation, but you decided not to cooperate, not to help solve crimes that were occurring at your business entity by patrons. Our police department could say so much, because some of them, as they say, there are ongoing active investigations, so they can't just spill out everything they've done, but they've indicated that they've conducted surveillance, they've conducted investigations on their, of their own, that determined that the resident, that the patrons that were visiting your location was the ones who were committing these crimes. And, and that's why I make that motion today. Is there a second?
I'll make a second to that motion, that we support the staff's recommendation to revoke administrative conditional use permit 15-09 and conditional use permit number 15-05.
Paulina Roehlcall.
Good evening. Commissioner Yang. Commissioner Lewis. Commissioner Basera.
Aye.
Commissioner.
That's okay.
Sorry, Vice Chair Williams.
Aye.
And then Chair Gutierrez.
Aye.
So motion passes.
Okay, now let me read the statement.
Chair, note that the approval, the revocation resolution will be presented to the planning commission.
Yes.
On the October 10th.
Yeah, it says, yes, direct staff to prepare a draft resolution to reflect the planning commission's decision for October 10, 2023 meeting. And at that time, there'll be a, a hearing on the final resolution, and at that time, the applicant will have the opportunity to, after whatever the commission votes on, to appeal the decision to the city council.
Just point of clarification, Chair. There, there will not be a hearing on the, on the October 10th planning commission meeting.
Okay.
Staff will present the resolution as a consent item to the planning commission, and the planning commission will have the opportunity to either pull the item to this, for discussion, or, or approve it with a determination that it does reflect the planning commission's decision tonight.
Great, let the record reflect Joanne's comments for the correction at this time.
One, one quick, Joanne, in terms of the October 10th date, now does a, Canada has 10 days from today, or 10 days from October 10 days to appeals to the city council?
The appeal period starts the moment the city, I'm sorry, the planning commission adopts the resolution, which is on October 10th, if the planning commission does adopt the resolution on that date.
Thank you.
And so just, yeah, for clarification, tell that, yeah, so, is there anything the city attorney would like to clarify or anything like that?
Nope, I think that, got it.
Okay, great. Thank you. For non-hearing items, we have no non-hearing items this evening. Commission reports, comments, and miscellaneous items. Would any of the commissioners like to report or comment on an item? Seeing none, we'll go, move on to the community development and director's report. Paulina, do you have any items to report and also on city council actions?
Good evening, yes, I can do both of those together. See, you're trying to be efficient. We have a couple of events coming up. We're actually having a lot of community events, I think every weekend between now and the end of the year. So starting with this Thursday, we are having the state of the city, or Centennial State of the City and Employee Recognition Dinner, so we encourage everyone to attend. It's a lovely evening where the mayor gets to share what we've been working on as a city for the last year and where we're aimed, or where we want to go in the future. So that's Thursday, September 28th, and it's at the Sportsplex, and it's 5:30, and ticket sales can be purchased online or at City Hall as well. Following this Saturday, or the event this Thursday, is the annual West Covina Moon Festival. It's between 10:00 AM and 9:00 PM, ending with Bruno Mars and the Hooligans band, and it's going to be a lot of different performers, a lot of vendors, a lot of food, so it's going to be our first annual moon festival and hope everyone can come out and check it out.
Date is that?
This is Saturday, December 30th, and it's at the downtown, historic downtown West Covina along Glendora Avenue in Lakes. Sorry, September 30th.
So that's awful far ahead.
Yeah. Then Saturday, October 7th is the Fire Prevention Week, open house, and that is at fire station number two, and it's between 10:00 AM and 2:00 PM, and there's going to be games, and Sparky the Fire Dog's going to be there. So we hope to have people come and join us. There's going to be a fire, a fundraiser for firefight, or fire explorers, they're going to be selling hot dogs, chips, soda, and water, and so that information's also on the city calendar. And so those are a couple of the items that are, or events that are coming up. As far as city council action items, I don't believe there's been any, so there's nothing to report till now.
Great, thank you, Paulina. Okay, we're now, we'll move on to adjournments, since there's no further business to consider, this meeting is adjourned at 9:48 PM Pacific Time.